Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the I'm getting some feedback. All right, sorry. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Atsego City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, August 26th. Audra, can you have the record show our city attorneys, city planner, city engineer, along with all council members, our assistant city administrator and our city administrator? At this time, I will ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, that to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is our open forum. This is the portion of the meeting that you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Yes. Can you go to the podium and state your name first and then?
My name is Kenny Reis and my address is 1424 82nd Street Northeast, or otherwise known as Circle Northeast. And I have some handouts with the council members. So the issue at hand is an illegal culvert that happens to be spilling water across my backyard. Meant to be here at the last meeting, but for retiree, I was working from dawn till dark, and so I didn't make it. But anyway, as you see, I spelled out some of the facts here. First of all, Ochoa and 82nd have been resurfaced recently. I'm not sure exactly when. The development to the north, including storm sewer curbs and gutters, is not so old. The culvert under Ochoa, which is on the northeast corner of our property, is 24 inches in diameter. And also the culvert under our driveway, which is on 82nd, on the south side of our property, is 24 inches diameter also. And drainage from one property onto another person's yard, I think we all acknowledge that is illegal. And number six, the council as a body decides how to spend money or not how to spend money. I had made this request about a month ago, and some of the city engineer, the mayor, and I don't know who else, met and decided not to address my issue, or at least not to resolve it. That's a problem in and of itself because the council, as you know, decides how to spend the money or how not to spend the money. So my discussion points, I think we all know that the culvert is illegal because it dumps water across my backyard between my house and my septic system. It's going to be flowing pretty good now with this rainstorm. The engineer, whoever was the engineer, when Ochoa and 82nd were resurfaced, they had an opportunity to look at it and address it. I'm sure that they were aware of it, but nothing was done with it. And also when that development to the north was done, that could have been addressed at that time also, which was in prior years. I don't know why it was not dealt with because I'm sure, sure the engineer would have known. So drainage, as you all know, is an issue for every plant and every development, at least in Minnesota, but I think nationwide. And there is methods to deal with drainage. And the common or most typical or the most standard, the most accepted way is to divert the water around the edges of property by a utility and drainage easement. This is the accepted practice. And although I haven't looked, it's probably written into law that you don't run it across the property. You can't change where the water goes other than divert it around your house, around the property edges. In my situation, the culvert spills water from the neighbor on the other side of Ochoa, and I don't know how big an area, but it comes across my backyard, which is unlawful. The 24-inch culvert that's under my driveway, I'm sure when a permit for this house was issued, the city engineer looked at that to see how much water was coming there. There's a 24-inch culvert, so it's like this big, but it drains a very little portion of the road surface. That's it. Half the road surface, approximately 200 feet. And so instead of a culvert like this, like a six or eight inch would be plenty big because there's very little water that currently goes through there. So what do we do? The council has, in my opinion, an obligation to deal with it because it's illegal. So we could potentially connect to the storm sewer that's on the north, that's quite a distance away, be quite costly, but it would be an option. We could blaze the trail along the back of my property and then all onto the west side. It's all wooded, so you'd have to log the trees off, create a ditch, but that would be an option to get it back out toward 82nd. Another way would be to dig the ditch deeper because the culvert across Ochoa is lower than my driveway culvert. And so if you dug the ditch deeper and then lowered the culvert in my driveway, that would also do it. But then finally, I looked at it and I thought I'd come up with the least expensive, the least intrusive, and perhaps the best option. And that is number one, to abandon and remove the culvert that goes under Ochoa. Fill in the dirt. It's a relatively small area to the north of Humphreys driveway and on the east side of Ochoa. Fill that in up as high as possible, basically to the curb. Then reverse the slope on Humphreys driveway, so it goes the other direction, goes to the south. And then install a new culvert to the south of Humphreys driveway. If you see on my sketch there, a new culvert going at an angle and the flow would work just fine. It would work good. So I respectfully ask the culvert to address this issue. Do not ignore it. We all know, and I think we can all recognize that it's illegal the way it is now. And sure the attorney could affirm that for you.
So, Mr., say your last
Reisen and
Reisen. Okay, I want to just confirm I had that correctly. As you said, we did discuss it. So your number six about me making the decision is not true. So we did meet prior, but all of the council was they were all notified after Ron and Adam and I had met with it, and then we were given a full report at the last council meeting. So I will turn this over to our attorney and to our engineer with some comments on this.
Okay.
You want to go first?
You can go first.
Well, Mayor, so city engineer made a presentation at the previous council meeting indicating that the drainage pattern has been this way for a long time. And assuming that's true, then the situation is not illegal. Cities and other people are allowed to maintain existing drainage patterns. So an issue can arise if there's a significant change in the drainage pattern that results in flooding. But I've not seen facts or data on that in this situation. I've heard from the city engineer that the drainage pattern is essentially the same as it's been for many years. So absent other information or evidence, my understanding is that the situation is not illegal.
Ron, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I emailed Dan the photo of the exhibit that I had from last time and a few photos, so they're ready to bring up on the screen. You want me to kind of go through that again?
Sure, since the resident was not present.
Correct. So Dan's brought it up on the screen. It's a 15-inch culvert that goes under Ochoa. It drains .085 acres from the east side of the road under it through Mr. Reisen's property. That cayenne-colored blue is the drainage pattern. It does diagonally go across the back of his yard. That development was platted in 1972, so 52 years ago. So that drainage pattern has been in existence for 52 years. The development to the north occurred in 1997, and nothing has changed. That was farmland before that, and the water up this lot to the east of Ochoa went through the lot on the west of Ochoa prior to that to keep the water from going across another person's property after it was planted. That Heritage Hills was paved in 2021, and Walsh Estate was last paved in 2022. So they are fairly recent pavement projects, but there was nothing to let us know that there was any concerns or issues. I did go out there and take photos the day after a two-and-a-half-inch rain. And everything was dry. This is the culvert underneath Ochoa at the I can't remember if that's the exit or the entry point, but it is dry. That's the exit point. That is also dry. This is after a two-and-a-half-inch rain from the night before. And this is the neighbor to the to the west of Mr. Reisen's property where the drainage comes back out and reaches the the ditch along 82nd Street. And that is dry. So it all is draining effectively through that property without you know, once it rains, it passes, it's gone. It's a very small drainage area, .85 acres, so it doesn't take much time for that water to drain off of that property and move on.
Also, other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So what you're saying, Kenneth, that after tonight or after this rain today, you're going to see what in your yard? Are you going to see an excess amount of water? Does it, does it enter your your home? I'm curious as to what you see that maybe we see differently or that staff has seen differently.
Like right now or soon, there'll be like a stream going between my house and my septic system. It'll be flowing. Most of it flows through, but what remains there is not really like your problem. You know, I could, I could solve that with a little bit of grading work, but it does flow through, which is not allowed. I have talked to my attorney. I haven't hired him yet to address this issue, but you know, if I'm forced to, I guess. But yeah, it flows right between, it comes like within 20 feet of the house and about five feet from the septic system.
That's right.
Mayor, this was platted in 1972. That's when the city wasn't a city, township. Wright County reviewed these, and for whatever reason, they didn't put drainage and utility easements where they were probably necessary. If this was a development that was completed today, we certainly would put drainage and utility easements on those parcels, but this is 52-year-old plat completed by the county back in the day. And as Dave, the city attorney has stated, this is a historic drainage way that's been there more than 15 years and thus in, put it in a term, I guess, prescriptive. I don't know how Dave would call it, but
But it doesn't, doesn't release you of obligation, though. Sorry.
Well, Mayor, I would just say if Mr. Reisen does hire an attorney, I'd be happy to talk with that attorney about what their legal claims are.
Yeah, I mean, the last time I did that, I've only done it one other time. But he wrote him a letter and pointed out their unlawful behavior. And that was the end of that. And they dropped it immediately. But it cost me money to do that. You know, it cost me a few grand, which is unfortunate. All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we were still under the open forum. We have any other comments? All right, we will close the open forum and move on to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor.
That's right.
On the consent agenda, I would like to bring down 3.3 and 3.7.
Okay.
If you can make those 6.1, 6.2. You said 3.3, 3.7, correct?
Correct.
All right, any other changes? Then a motion would be in order?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda. A motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor.
That's right.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Sir, second? Second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item 4.1, Michael's. I will turn this over to our city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael's Construction is currently located at Lot 1, Block 1, Michael's addition, which is located north of 70th Street, west of Kessler Avenue. They received their approvals in 2020 for construction of a 23,000-square-foot office along with the shop warehouse building and larger contractor's yard. Their business has been successful in Atsego, so they're proposing a basically double the office onsite. That is subject to site and building plan review under the zoning ordinance. That doesn't require a public hearing, but it's still reviewed for consistency with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And then obviously, application for a building permit subsequent to that. The existing office is 23,000 square feet. The addition to the site plan anticipated expansion in the future. City staff and the city should be pleased that this is coming forward so soon after initial construction. But there's no change in terms of the site plan to the shop or warehouse, the contractor's yard, and only minimal changes to the site plan around the office itself based on their prior planning for this. The building is located to the west of the existing office. They changed the orientation to be north-south versus basically in line with the existing structure. But it does meet all setback requirements from perimeter lot lines. Off-street parking, they're adding additional parking to the south of the existing lot on the south side of the building. So they'll have a surplus of 30 parking spaces once completed. Developer provided grading plans for the proposed improvements to address stormwater management and also utility connections, which were reviewed by the city engineer and found to be consistent with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. If they do add any exterior lighting, we'd review that as part of the building permit to make sure it complies with the zoning ordinance requirements. The design of the structure basically mirrors that of the existing building with tip-up concrete panels with color added to it. The design is basically the same as the exterior finish in height. They're showing one additional sign on the entryway for identification purposes, and that would be subject to a permit issued again with the building permit. City staff recommended approval based on consistency with the comprehensive plan, both in terms of the land use as well as the economic development goal to encourage in-place expansion of existing businesses within the city. The plans all comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Planning Commission, as I said, considered the application at their meeting on August 19th. They had no concerns. The Planning Commission did note that they considered the site to be exceptionally well-maintained, including all the landscaping that was put in for screening and aesthetic purposes. So we extend our appreciation to Michael's for those efforts, but the Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval. That would be subject to seven conditions that we've outlined in the findings of fact and decision presented for the council this evening.
Does the applicant wish to comment?
Just to come, just, I'm Jack Bratkin. I'm the president of RJ Ryan Construction, and we were the general contractors on the original facilities in in cooperation with Michael's and will be the contractor for the, for the new facility as well. So we're just happy to be back and, and working with Michael's. So here to answer any questions that anybody might have, but we're anxious to get going.
Perfect.
Great.
All right, we may call you back up, but all right, council. Do you have any questions for the planner or the applicant or a motion in order?
Mayor. I could make a motion.
All right.
Motion to approve site and building plans for an office expansion on Lot 1, Block 1, Michael's addition, subject to the conditions as stated, but the findings of fact and decision as presented.
Second. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 4.2, Prairie Park Estates. Dan?
So item 4.2 is Prairie Park Estates. It's preliminary plat that includes one existing single-family lot with a house upon it and five proposed single-family lots. This would be located just west of the Scott Dale Lurkey soccer fields at Prairie Park, north of 90th Street. The applications include a conditional use permit for lot sizes to allow lots smaller than 20 acres and less than 450 feet in width. Five of the lots are proposed to be accessed via private drive versus public street, which requires conditional use permit. And then we're averaging the wetland buffer required amongst the existing wetlands within the property. All this is evaluated based on the performance standards and the criteria established by the zoning ordinance. The area surrounding the site, which is approximately 39 acres in area, consists of the city properties to the east and south. To the west are the 10-acre lots as part of the Hidden Creek Trails development, and then to the north are rural residential properties that haven't previously been platted or developed beyond meets and bounds rural properties. The city comprehensive plan guides the property for low-density residential development when sewer and water is available in the future. That is many, many years out based on the city sewer staging plan adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. So what the city allows as an interim use is development at one dwelling unit per 10 acres using septic and well systems. Now, the property that exists today has the one house upon it. The property to the west was originally part of this site. That was subdivided off and had a house built upon it. And then the city acquired the property to the east for the Public Works City Hall facility. When the city acquired that property, the development rights for the that were remaining with Mr. Basian's property were assigned to this lot so that he would have the ability to subdivide lots in the future, which he's now proposing to do with the preliminary and final plat that's been submitted. So on the screen, north is to the right because of the orientation of the paper. So the lots are all at least a minimum one acre in area and not more than two and a half acres in area. The setbacks that would apply generally are from 90th Street or the lot at the south under the property as that's the only public street. The private drive basically runs along the east plat line along the west side of Dale Lurkey Fields to provide access for lots one through five. In the future, it would also provide access to Mr. Basian's existing home. If he were to sell that property in the future, the driveway needs to be rerouted to that cul-de-sac turnaround at the end. The private drive's basically been designed as a city street, but it would be the responsibility of the homeowners to maintain long-term and including any resurfacing maintenance or reconstruction in the future. There would be drainage and utility easements at the perimeter of the lots over the private drive and over all the wetlands and wetland buffers within the property for stormwater management purposes. All the wetlands that exist within this property, and they are extensive because Atsego Creek runs through this site. Those are all being contained essentially within Mr. Basian's lot that he will retain ownership of until that's further developed in the future, but again overlaid by easements. Utilities would be by septic and well system. Each of the five proposed new lots has a primary and secondary well site or, excuse me, drain field site to accommodate that service. Even though this is adjacent to the city's park property, there's no need to acquire additional property from this development, so there'd be a park dedication fee paid for the five new lots at the time of final plat approval. City staff recommended approval based on the use being consistent with the comprehensive plan and that the plat complies with the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. Public hearing was held to consider the application on the Planning Commission meeting on August 19th. There were a number of property owners from the surrounding area with interest in the project that spoke with either comments or questions at the public hearing. So we provided the draft minutes of the Planning Commission as part of your packet to review that. Planning Commission discussion focused primarily on the use of the private drive for access. The real constraint there is there isn't enough depth between the Dale Lurkey fields and the wetlands to accommodate a public street plus the lots. With the understanding of the people buying these lots, that they're going to be responsible for that roadway in the future. The construction of that roadway is adequate for public safety purposes as well as access to lots. So city staff had recommended approval, so did a majority of the Planning Commission support that with the final vote of five to one to recommend approval. So we've drafted necessary findings of fact and decision for council consideration of the seat consistent with that recommendation, which is subject to ten conditions.
Does the applicant wish to comment?
Hi, George Basian here. I am representing the applicant here. We don't have any questions right now, but we do look forward to working with the city and our legal and engineering firms that we've hired, and we're just looking forward to this development if you approve it. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Council, questions for staff or the applicant on this project?
Madam Mayor.
That's right.
I know there was some discussion maybe about what type of private drive that had to be, whether it had to be curb and gutter, or we could just do simple culvert. Are they, is the applicant able to make that decision, or do we have to set the standard?
Mayor, currently the condition is written that they've submitted these plans, but the ultimate design is subject to review by the city engineer. The final plat comes back to the council for action. Staff has discussed reducing the width of the drive 24 feet and only requiring curb on one side at the access point to maintain the front yard, given the short setbacks. So that may be an option that we'll explore with the developers, engineer, and bring back with the final plat instruction plans.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I would agree with Ryan on the flexibility of the driveway since that was a major concern. And I guess it's not the driveway. It's the road to their homes, but just that the impact and there was a lot of discussion, just, you know, what does that look like in 20 years, 25 years? And how, you know, is there an expectation those homeowners expect that is going to be maintained?
Mayor, there'd certainly be an advantage of making it look less like a city street to temper that expectation.
Are they, Dan, are they allowed to put a sign up that says private roads? Okay.
And we, and it was added in that they're going to have a fence then because there obviously was concern that since it's next to the soccer fields that people would end up driving down this road to sit in their car and not watch your kids play soccer potentially, or the impact of those neighbors are running through.
Mayor, we color code the street signs green or, or say straight blue are for private streets.
Do we have other private streets?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, for townhouse developments, for example. Oh, of course. Yep, but they would also be allowed to put up a much larger sign that says, "Don't drive down."
Both people would recognize that a blue sign is a private, but yeah, that was the reasoning behind the two different colors.
Any other questions? Otherwise? Oh, yes. Would that private road sign be required or would that just be an option? All right, if there's no other questions, then a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, let's hear the motion. Motion to approve a preliminary plat and conditional use permit for Prairie Park Estates, subject to the conditions stated on the findings of fact and decision as presented.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Ryan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 4.3, Xcel Energy.
Thank you, Mayor.
Xcel Energy is proposing to build a electric substation on Lot two, or excuse me, Lot 1, Block 2 of the Two, or excuse me, lot one, block two of the Atsigo Industrial Park Second Edition. The property is guided for industrial land use and zoned IT district. There is a transmission line that goes across the south line of the site that the substation will connect to. In order to distribute power for areas within XL Energy Service District. The surrounding areas to the north of County Road Thirty-Seven is all guided for industrial, both within city of Atsigo. And city of Albertville to the east of the Caddler Avenue right of way. On the south side is existing development within the city of Albertville consisting of townhome development on the east side of Caddler. Then on the Atsigo side of the roadway are three rural, single family homes and the balance is all cultivated field. Plan for future low density residential development at such time as sewer and water would extend south. The substation on the site is allowed by conditional use permit as part of any zoning district within the city. Although in Atsigo, we zone the one existing and two future substations to be INS district, which provides some. Better adaptability in terms of setbacks and lot requirements of use. So that change is recommended here as well. You can see on the map, this is shows XL Energy's existing service area. Somewhat limited within the Atsigo portion of this location west of. Albertville and south of I ninety-four. But still an important service area that we'll see future demand as part of continued growth in the city. The lot is existing as part of the Atsigo Industrial Park, which was planted in the nineties. The lot is at least two acres in area and hundred and fifty feet to Jansen Avenue to the east. The substation needs to be set back fifty feet from all property lines unless the structure would collapse within the site. So all of the tower and transmission or distribution facilities comply with the fifty foot setback. There is the utility building at the northeast corner of the installation that would be. Part of the electrical equipment. That's only twenty and height obviously isn't going to collapse outside the property line. So its location is appropriate. Access would be off of existing Jansen Avenue. Be a single driveway leading to a gate enclosure. Leading to a gate enclosure surrounding the substation. It's the driveway between the street and the gate needs to be paved. The interior of the site is basically a rock surface so that it can be more easily maintained. There is a fence at the perimeter of the site. It's ten feet in height. Energy originally proposed the south side of that fence be a concrete wall with a stone fascia on it. The planning commission added a condition that the stone fascia extend to the east side of the site. As well as Caddler Avenue may be a future major roadway quarter. So for aesthetic purposes on that route. They felt that was appropriate at this time. Developer provided a grading plan for the site, including development of two stormwater basins to manage stormwater within the property. Because of the transmission line on the south line of the property, it's possible to use landscaping to screen. The installation, so thus the ten foot tall solid wall. The balance of the site outside the fenced enclosure would be natural grasses consistent with how the city maintains many of its. Utility properties. Exterior lighting would be used only on an as needed basis. But pictures would still need to be shown to comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance as part of their building permit process. Here's the profile of what you would see of the site from County Road. On the west side of the site is the hundred and fifteen kilovolt equipment with fifty foot height, powers up to sixty feet. The smaller distribution equipment is on the east side of the site. It's only thirty-five feet in height with sixty foot towers. Again, the ten foot fence in stone veneer wall on the south and east sides. We did receive public comments with questions concerning electromagnetic radiation. And so XL Energy provided information sheet addressing that comment. They also spoke to it during the public hearing. To resolve those questions to the satisfaction of the planning commission. City staff is recommending approval of the application because the installation is needed to serve existing and planned. Land uses in the city and surrounding area in the future, consistent with the growth plans of the conference of plan. The plans also comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Planning commission did hold their public hearing on August nineteenth to consider the request. There was some discussion by the planning commission about where this distribution line connects to where it serves. Which was responded to by XL Energy. There were also comments from landlords directly across from the site with questions. Pertaining to a range of issues concerning the site. So we included the minutes again of the planning commission for your information. But after closing the public hearing, the planning commission voted six to zero to recommend approval. So council actions this evening would be consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixty-three, amending the zoning map and. Approval of finding, decision approving the conditional use permit and interim use permit subject to the conditions as well.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Scott Johnson, XL Energy, can you relate this manager? So I'm here for any questions and I brought. Couple engineers in case you need the in-depth expertise. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, council questions for staff or for the applicant?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Dan, would you mind go to the, one of the earlier slides has the picture of the site, like an actual photograph? And then can you update our? The internet connections. Oh, great.
Yeah, it said it was unstable.
I could peek at yours. So this is something I didn't realize. This is something I didn't realize until I just saw this picture, but it looks to me like there are transmission lines above. And then there's sort of the local lines below that, almost like they're running perpendicular. Is that correct?
So, thank you, Madam Mayor Council. I can kind of answer that without even. So typically our distribution would be underneath the transmission line. They have to be separated. So that's not necessarily our wires. It could be another, another electric. We share poles and stuff.
Yep, okay.
So that would happen.
Okay.
Can you come up to the podium?
Thank you.
Drew Birdsley, project manager for XO. So in that picture, the, the pole that's just barely in the picture to. That is a distribution pole that's running, that distribution line runs north and south along Caddler.
Okay.
The, the, the one there in the center of the picture, that's our transmission line structure. That's the transmission line running east and west alongside the main highway there.
I got you. Do, will this project change that configuration at all? I mean, I know you're going to have feeders coming off of it, but.
No, so the only part that will change is where that transmission line that's running alongside the highway now. That line will actually break and turn in and then come back out. Same path. You'll just see it go in and come back out.
Okay.
So, that's the only change.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? And a motion would be in order?
Four dash sixty-three, amending the zoning map and approve a conditional use permit and interim use permit for lock two, block one. Atsigo Industrial Park Second Edition, subject to the conditions stated on the findings of fact and decision as presented. Second.
Ryan, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, one item of note, it's actually ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine. Just a correction for the record.
Did I see it? Oh.
No, you said it. Oh, it was written, but it's actually twenty twenty-four dash zero nine.
It's an error in our packet.
Correct.
Okay. Those changes are noted.
The amendment.
Yeah. Jeff, do you second that?
Second.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to our engineering, Atsigo Creek Rehabilitation. Right. Thank you. All right, council questions? It was very thorough. Thank you, Ron.
Madam Mayor, I did have one question.
Yes.
I can't remember if it was this project or a different one, but I think I asked if there was a potential for this to be a future sort of park trail or something. Is that possible? Okay.
Sure.
Mayor, the wetland just to the east of the creek in the center of the city is also planned to have basically a natural greenway quarter. Completely surrounding it as the property is adjacent to it develops.
Okay, thank you. That's the place we went on the park tour, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We saw where the bridge was going to go.
Yep.
Or future road, I guess I should call it. A motion would be in order?
Mayor. And order advertisement for bids for the Atsigo Creek Rehabilitation Project, city project number twenty-four dash zero seven.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on.
Just a point with the internet, that would just be the Zoom that's being disrupted, the actual audio recording is functioning properly. But Zoom is very questionable, it appears right now, so.
We kept getting signs up here that says.
Yeah.
That's. In your packet, the customer, which was three point three originally. Ryan?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I believe we discussed this probably about a year ago at this point. And at the time I stated, you know, my position is I'm not in favor of the city. Abdicating its responsibility to the county or abdicating its authority to the county. On this issue, so I just needed to pull it down because I'm, I'm not going to be supporting this one.
Adam, can you comment on this? This was brought up by Admin Subcommittee.
Yeah, Mayor Council, the authority being granted to Wright County under the joint powers agreement would just be for the issuance of registration. Yeah, Mayor, Council, uh, the authority being granted to Wright County under the Joint Powers Agreement would just be for the issuance of registration, uh, renewal. Uh, and also compliance checks. So statute outlines, uh, two pieces of compliance. County would be doing. The city would still retain all of its zoning authority, uh, under local ordinances. Uh, that Dan will be presenting to the Planning Commission sometime fall, council. Uh, sometime after that. So in terms of local control, uh, the city would still have some of that, uh, to the extent that. Paperwork, uh, and also the annual.
Mayor, I I just add one comment to that, which is it makes some sense to me to do it this way, since you have Wright County doing your law enforcement, because I think for the compliance checks, they'll probably be similar to a liquor store compliance check. Well, they'll have to send in a. Individual who looks like like maybe underage and, uh, I imagine Wright County has the staffing to do that better than the city. So that might be one area where it'd be beneficial to have Wright County, uh, doing that type of work.
Mayor, Council, they they do do that for alcohol and also for tobacco licensing currently, so it would be consistent with that.
I think one of the issue, Madam Mayor, uh, one of the issues we talked about was what this in effect does is pool all. Is the business licenses for cannabis businesses with the county. So the county, if we granted this JPA. Would have the authority to say zero licenses go to Atsigo. Is that correct?
Uh, because. Mayor, this is my understanding that it would not be correct. City Attorney, I don't know if you have any comment on that, but.
Mayor, the the state statute requires a certain number of licenses to be issued by the state for a given geographic area, and then the city or the county just has to register those license. So I think the same number of licenses would have to be issued under the state statute, but Dan hasn't counted that.
Mayor, so the statute does provide that city must issue at least one license per twelve thousand five hundred people. Same regulation applies countywide if adopted that way. You're not required to adopt that limitation. It's optional. The way this JPA has been structured and the discussion from the county is they wanted any restrictions on the number of registrations included in the local ordinance, not as part of this JPA. So that would be an issue separate from that.
I'm not sure I understand that, Ken.
So. What the county has said is part of this joint powers agreement, the question staff had initially was, well, if you're going to put limits on the number of registration, shouldn't that be covered under this joint JPA? The county said, no, that should be in your local ordinance to restrict if you choose to do so.
Meaning by zoning.
By zoning.
Sure.
So.
So, but the state is not a, is not going to allow us to zone these businesses out of existence.
Atsigo has to allow at least two. Within its zoning ordinance.
We can set the number in zoning? Okay.
This, as as we read it, we talked about it during admin was, as Adam said, the compliance part of it. So they're already coming to our city to do. With this, we would have to get staff and manage this ourselves for the compliance checks of the state.
Mayor, there's also compliance involved with going and inspecting the actual product. Types of products being offered and whether they comply with the limits on THC and, um, other content. So, uh, it's a level of certain. Technical expertise that exceeds the city's current capabilities, um, would be seen at least from staff's standpoint as a extra burden.
Great. Information in front of us, a motion would be in order.
Mayor, make a motion, motion to approve a joint powers agreement between Wright County and the City of Atsigo for the enforcement and regulation.
Second. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Okay, moving on to item six point two, which point seven in your packet. Ryan.
Yeah, and a mayor, thank you. Um. I really don't know where to start with this one. I think it's just what it kind of comes down to is this is a fairly ambitious plan for Prairie Park. I think it's just. Too much to be. Blunt. Um, I understand that the costs at this point are just rough estimates and don't. They're not, we're not committing funds to this at this point, um, but I think the right time to sort of say no is now. Um, if if I think the project is too big, and I think it's it's too big, I think. Some of the playground items, uh, having, um, you know, the ball field updates, um, the concession building, I think it's it's just too much. For our park. Um, I would, in order for me to be comfortable with it, I'd need to see it probably significantly downsized, and I would like to see. Um, although I understand it's early in the project, I would like to see a lot more private, um, investment. Um, make this more financially feasible. Right now, at the estimate of sixteen point two million is, uh. It's just too much for me, so.
We have Nick here. Nick, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, uh, tonight in front of you is a consideration of the adoption of the Prairie Park Master Plan. Uh, to Ryan's point, uh, ambitious, I think, is what the community voiced, what they wanted. Um, we did, you know, go out and do various forms of community input. We created a new advisory committee that guided this master plan. We've had, uh, you know, online options such as Survey Monkey, we had social pinpoint, we've had many iterations of the concepts before the preferred master plan. We had two part commission meetings where we allowed residents to come in if they so chose. Uh, the advisory committee also came and presented kind of what is all in this plan and formulated before tonight for your consideration for adoption. Um, I think this is a very well put together plan, and we did try to utilize the existing amenities and upgrade the things that are currently offered in. Comes to the playground being out of date. There's many things that this park needs, uh, due to its age. And so that was the reason why this plan was kind of put into place back in August of twenty twenty-three. I think the RCA did a nice job about like kind of the process step by step. Of how we got here tonight for consideration of adoption. Um, I know many of you have seen this plan before, so, uh, I'd open it up to any questions at this time to you guys.
Council questions. My comments will be, I think we can all agree that when you look at the bottom number of the price tag, it's a lot. But we have one major. Community park at this point, and the hope is to obviously. It potentially happens in other areas to get other areas that we can acquire property, but at this point, we don't have anything. Um, I would agree that. I appreciate all the level of input we got, both at events and online. Um, I I am concerned that some of this. Puts us in a bad position with ADA compliance that we're not in that or look at being deficient in certain areas. I I guess I struggle with the point that just because we agree to move ahead with this doesn't mean that we can't be pursuing, to Ryan's point, those private partnerships. I think those can happen in conjunction. These, this build out, I mean, what's the end date to it? Being. Next year or in a few years, but I think having a guide to be able to. Show our community that we're listening and that we're receptive to ideas that they have in. The center of our city is important also. Right, Mayor.
Yeah. Um, so the document is first and foremost communication, because the city for a long time, the Parks and Recreation Commission, had difficulty defining. Ultimately what they wanted Prairie Park to be, and this goes back to when the first park and recreation director was hired. Time was coming up to start redoing elements of Prairie Park again. Plus, you get bombarded by competing interests for improvements. At one point, it's soccer fields, it's lacrosse, it's baseball. So the city needs to prioritize what its pri. Main focus is for these improvements and also take input from these other groups and say, okay, here's the cost for your improvements. So we can, this would fit within the plan for the park as to how it can be built out, but here's the cost for it. And so now as an implementation tool, uh, you have to look at a capital improvement plan and. Kind of some of the improvements at Prairie Park happen, it's fits and starts like the soccer fields, et cetera, but. This document is more useful to the Park and Recreation Department, to the community, to those, uh. Sports associations to then discuss how to some of these things in a more organized way that hasn't happened in the past. So. Yes, it's a huge number. Is the city gonna probably undertake this alone? No. Um, simply because it's not affordable and wouldn't benefit enough of the community, and there are also other park priorities that need to be accommodated, but. It at least gives the park staff a basis for discussion with the community and these community groups that can then be brought back to the council as part of.
And Mayor, one more point, Dan's point is that you need a document like this, a guide to pursue grant funding, right? So you can't just go, we need X amount of dollars because we want them. We need a a guiding document to say, we're looking to improve XYZ. This is what our preliminary cost estimate show. We're applying for this grant funding because this shows that it is needed. So this is a a document that will help us pursue alternative funding as well.
Madam Mayor, and I would just, um, also, I just think it's important to give to those that were that served on the Prairie Park Master Plan. Maybe because they were residents that had small kids, residents that had older kids that are grown and not no longer living in their home. Um, and they volunteered their time and their evening to come and voice their 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 wants and their needs and their desires, and they're also what they didn't want and didn't feel necessary. Um, so to kudos to them because they really did get, it was, we had members from Rosa, softball associations and Oriole, so it it was a very good. Conversation was a very good group. Of residents that aren't all aligned, aren't all alike and aligned with their lives right now. So. I I really do, I I'd appreciated their feedback and them showing up, so.
With with that, Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt the Atsigo Park Master Plan dated August eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Passes four to one.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, we are still under city council reports and updates. Uh, first item is Heritage Preservation Commission, Brittany.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, HPC is, has a few things coming up. They are working on the Friedrich. Um, park sign. They are looking to meet with the Friedrich family again, to gather again just more information and to send our. Our Parks and Rec Director, Nick Jacobs. Uh, they are also, we have, um, committee members that are. Ending the Chippewa Conference this year, and then lastly, just getting ready for Prairie Park, for Prairie Festival, Prairie Park, September twenty-first.
Next item, Park and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. We unfortunately did not meet. We, uh, did not have enough items for the agenda, but we. Now approve the Prairie Park Master Plan.
Uh, Planning Commission was me. And our council agenda tonight, we're at the Planning Commission, so that included the Bayesian Property Accelerity and Michael's Expansion. Next is Public Safety Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it was a small group, uh, for public safety, the biggest, um, well, a couple of big things that we discussed was, of course, we all know now that County Road thirty-six has been reopened, which is awesome. So, um, people can drive through and not have to worry about anything there. Uh, we, of course, talked about Prairie Festival, which is coming up September twenty-first. Um, we'll be there. Um, with, um, the touch of truck and, um, all of us will be there and attending and, um, so feel free to come on over and, um, say hi and. And, um, have some fun, twenty-first of September.
It's, does anyone else have anything? I would just say, which was in our update, um, Ryan and I. Cutting, which I see Paul and the botany is in the audience also. Like that ninety-four, so very well attended. Good for our area, once it's done. Um, we have lots of stuff, lots of major construction around us, so, um. We held off, it it rained, then it was sunny, then it rained, then it was sunny, but the picture was taken in the sun. Does anyone else have any updates?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I did attend the ISD seven twenty-eight Communities Partner Meeting. Uh, that was, um, it's always. Whether with our fellow neighbors and obviously Daniel Bitman, Dr. Daniel Bitman, and ninety new teachers this year across ISD seven twenty-eight. Um, so there's kind of ramping school year and getting ready. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a good year.
It's a lot of new teachers. All right, we will move on to staff. Dates, Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one update, uh, newsletters will be getting mailed out in the next week or so, so residents should be getting that in their mailbox after Labor Day.
Okay, that's it. Adam.
Mayor, Council, uh, as a reminder, city offices are closed on Monday for the Labor Day holiday, and I do have one request to schedule a, uh, special meeting. I would be looking on September ninth, which is a council evening, uh, at five thirty PM.
Does that work for everyone? Checking our calendars really quickly.
Five thirty you said?
Works. Okay. I will make a motion to call for a special meeting on September ninth at five thirty.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Tina, is. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passing. Adam.
Can I ask, Mayor?
Audra.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no updates.
All right. Dave.
But things to report, thanks, Mayor.
Dan.
Mayor, no update this week.
Great, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the last council meeting, lots of city street works been completed.
Yes.
We had the Mill and Overlay overlay projects have completed, except for the striping. Uh, the micro surface projects have been completed throughout the city and then reconstruction. Of streets within halls and faster old Grove Estates is still ongoing, but, uh, they were looking to start putting the base layer down. We'll see on that. Um, they also fogged some of the newer streets. Um, so lots of work, and it it's good that they're almost all complete because, of course, schools starting, so all that construction work is out of the way for. Where the school buses and and kids walk into school, so.
Thank you. Wright County.
Evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, not much to report, uh, this time around. A few things I have, uh, received a couple more emails from the city about traffic complaints. We have, uh, immediately got on specifically for eighty-fifth Street, this features on that. Feel free to keep sending them to us. We've been going through each one, uh. For each one routinely, so, uh, we'll get them at at them as soon as we can. Uh, the only thing to comment, school starts next Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah.
So, um, uh, probably expect a decrease in, uh, the juvenile complaints we've had through the summer that we've had.
Because they'll go to school.
So, but school problems, you know, football games.
Sure.
School here, that, you know, keeping around Halloween, you know, those are timely, but, uh, yeah, but I expect a reduction in that. Um, though we have been, uh, keeping up on presence in, uh, the hotspots, so. Uh, it's been pretty decently quiet past couple of weeks in terms of our issues, so fingers crossed, so. Um, I, that's basically all I had so far. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Anyone have anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No one has anything else, and a motion. No one has anything else, and a motion to adjourn would be in order, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Jeff, is there any discussion?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting has ended, thank you all for attending this evening.